One. The board is present. The regular meeting is reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limits so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Any person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin public participation with the persons who are physically in the room with us today and then move to those in the queue online. The first person today will be Kristin Jury. You can go ahead and come sit up at the table, and whenever you're ready to begin your public comment, I'll start the timer.
I have, actually, I went by the rules on the Internet, and it said five minutes, but we're down to three now, so I do have copies of everybody of what I'm speaking on today.
Very good.
Hello, my name is Kristin George, and I'm here to share a story of my son Lucas, who is in second grade. He is a special ed student within Oakland Schools ISD Lake Orion School District. February 2023, the school held a team meeting, which our advocate from my UCP and I attended. At that time, I was presented emergency intervention plan paperwork and a very poorly-written FBA. I refused to sign the EIP and refused to release PHI information, as there are some things in life that you have a right to keep private, and those records are one. At this meeting, we were provided statistical data of Luke's day. It was reported that from January 6th to February 24th, 23, Lucas had spent 1,167 minutes in what the school code calls the red zone. A better picture is 23 out of 25 days during those look backs, Lucas spent anywhere from 5 to 284 minutes in the red zone, and that is per day. You may be wondering what the red zone is. Lake Orion Community Schools has taken the zones of regulation to a whole new level. Zones of regulation were designed to help staff teach kids about regulating emotions, not labels of spaces to force kids in. For the top 10 do's and don'ts of school-wide zones of regulation, a key is to not portray one zone as worse than the other, use punitive practices relating to zones imply that the red zone is a bad zone. Essentially, by definition, under Act 451 of 1976, Section 1307D, a seclusion room is a space where a child cannot leave. True seclusion, the true seclusion room padded walls and door is located directly off the back right wall of the red zone area. The red zone is an empty room where two adults stand in the doorway, and the child is not able to leave. On April 5th, 2023, 2023, I sent a happy, healthy little boy to school. He had donuts with his paw that morning prior to being put on the bus, which picked him up at our door. At 12:20, I received a text message from the principal stating Lucas had a physical situation with staff. My mom's in RN, and because I had just started a new position at Blue Cross, we asked her to go get him. When they got back to the car, my mom called me immediately and said Lucas wouldn't stop crying and wouldn't use his arm. By 3:15, we had him into the orthopedic surgeon. At 7 o'clock the next morning, my son had surgery on his left arm to repair one of the two bones broken. On 4:07, Lucas woke up screaming in pain. We immediately took him to William Beaumont Children's Hospital, where an L3 fracture was diagnosed. His back fracture was 2.1 millimeters away from needing immediate surgery. Per the policy for emergency use of seclusion and restraint approved by this body, March 2017, there are a lot of rules in place, including debriefing meetings. The EIP filled out for my student, February 2023, is incomplete. The pair of professionals that held him in that red zone were not listed as participants on those.
There's a lot more, and I really wish you guys cared to listen, but that's part of what I'm battling. Thank you for your time. Next is Stephanie Boone.
I have a handout for each of you. Pass that over.
Sure.
Thank you. That was tough to listen to.
All right, whenever you're ready, you can begin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Boone, and I'm a mother of six from Ada. I am a former public schools educator and have always prided myself on being a safe space for all individuals. I've come to you again today to join you in upholding one of your own published guiding principles, which states that data and accountability must be used to help drive resources and focus improvement activities for students and educators. Today, I identify as a sad and confused parent. Ever since 2020, when it came to my attention that there has been an influx of sexually explicit and violent content being ushered into our public school media centers and classrooms by the hundreds, I have worked to understand why that might be. Because as educators, we are data-driven, I have done countless queries in an attempt to find just one study or piece of data which points to the benefits or positive effects of exposing children to sexually explicit or violent content. And I am here today to challenge you to do the same and to please report back to the people of Michigan with anything you may find. Instead, what I have found is a plethora of data linking early exposure to sexually explicit content and violence to detrimental effects in just about every aspect of a child's life, which most often carries over into adulthood. I've provided you with a handout that I put together, which contains some of the top Internet search results for data on the effects of early sexualization of children. A few highlights. The American Academy of Pediatrics says that young children have trouble distinguishing between what is happening on the screen, and I would add, in a book, and what could happen in real life, and also states there is fairly clear evidence that violent content can influence antisocial and aggressive behavior. According to Harvard University Center on the Developing Child, early experiences affect the foundations of both educational achievement and lifelong physical and mental health. Dr. Linda Papadopoulos, a renowned UK psychologist, agrees that early exposure to porn creates an unhealthy view of what healthy intimate relationships look like. My question to you today is, why aren't you confused with me? The data and evidence are overwhelming. Early exposure to sexually explicit and violent content leads to emotional withdrawal, potential physical dangers, vulnerability to sexual predators, sex trafficking of minors, and unsafe spaces. While I absolutely agree that books hold essential value toward building a love for literature and allow the reader to peer through windows into other worlds and perspectives and see themselves in mirrors and reflections of oneself, I will not be convinced that this somehow means it must include sexually explicit or violent depictions for children. The 2020 lockdowns have since been proven to be detrimental to the education and social emotional health of our children, and so has exposure to violent content and sexually explicit content. Please join me and my friends in this battle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bree Morgenberg.
Good afternoon, Bree Morgenberg from Mount Pleasant, representing myself. Do you find my shirt offensive? Youth lives matter, up your curriculum. Physical education, not fisting by Ed. Science, not sexualization. Math, not mutilation. Reading, not rimming. Are these statements morally correct? Last month, this board approved by majority to allow books containing such as acceptable. On a badge that is available through a National Teachers Union caucus, teachers are encouraged to show students they are a safe place, and students are able to scan a QR code and access information with how-to info, including fingering, fisting, and rimming, not to mention DIY penetration toys that include two brushes, tape, and a corn cob. That's for penetration to the vagina or the anus. This is not only unsafe, it is morally incomprehensible. It is wrong, yet the majority of this board has done nothing to protect the safety and morals of our students and schools, but rather has encouraged just the opposite. It is a big job sitting here in your position, I understand that, so I'm actually here to offer help. In efforts to get our Board of Education and school districts back on track with morals, the Constitution, and the founding of our country, it has requested that you add the following resolution to the agenda for the next regular State Board of Education meeting. Resolution concerning the discrimination of religion in Michigan public schools. Whereas the founding document of public education in the United States, the Northwest Ordinance, Section 14, Article 3, states that, quote, "Religion, morality, and knowledge be necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind; school and the means of education shall forever be encouraged." And whereas in Lynch versus Donley, 1984, the US Supreme Court, in a 5 to 4 decision written by Chief Justice Berger, held, quote, "Certain ceremonial references to God and religion in our nation are the inevitable consequence of the religious history that gave birth to our founding principles of liberty," unquote. And whereas one of our founding fathers, John Adams, said, quote, "Our Constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other," unquote. Thank you. The next person will continue the resolution.
Thank you. Kathy Fleming.
Hello, my name is Kathy Fleming, and I feel privileged to see each of your faces one-on-one, and that's why I'm here. I watch some things from afar, but I wanted to see you all here. Whereas the vision statement in Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan states that every learner in Michigan's public schools will have an inspiring, engaging, and caring learning environment that fosters creativity and critical thinkers who believe in their ability to positively influence Michigan and the world beyond, yet it does not make one claim to the inclusion of religion, literacy, and/or access of "and" whereas nearly a recorded 42% of homes in Michigan are religious. And whereas, as noted in the lack of acceptance of free speech for religion and lack of literacy and education for religion in many public schools, many students are without support that their peers may experience through their school-supported group of interest and demographic. And whereas, as declared in the statement of principles by the National Congress of Parents and Teachers, quote, "We believe religion is fundamental in our American tradition as a basic factor in personal and social behavior, and that every child is entitled to the opportunity to develop a religious faith. And whereas the home and public schools share responsibility in providing each child the opportunity to achieve the finest possible preparation for living. And whereas it is acceptable by many schools to fly sexuality flags, but not religious flags. Hmm. And whereas it is discrimination to treat a person unfavorably due to religious beliefs and students that are not presented with the same opportunity and treatments as other groups are, and then being discriminated against." That part of the resolution means something to me. You know, I am a Christian, and I graduated in Reed City Schools in 1984. I'm a 100-plus-year citizen, my family, and my son, all the way to 2008, had a good education overall. He works for Meyer, he's on the upper echelon, he went to Davenport. I'm very proud of all that. I am concerned of where we're going today. It's strange to me as a mom, and now grandmom, and I wanted to look at you all and just and say, thank you for your service. I thank you. Really think about this, and it's serious. I find the serious the topics that we have, and I know we have serious decisions. So I pray for your contemplation of them and the realization that religion and the kids who have a religious faith, they matter too, and it feels like we're getting pushed aside a little bit. And a lot of the people I know, they're just homeschooling and private schooling, and that's kind of a shame in a way. Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone.
Next is Andrew Sebold.
Andrew Sebold, Nuera, Michigan, Oceana County. Whereas it is with a lack of morality that sexually, that sexuality is promoted and discussed in the schools without parent knowledge. And whereas the Freedom to Read Resolution places importance on those who value diverse viewpoints, perspectives, and opinions in their children. And whereas it is stated in the Constitution and the Freedom to Read Resolution, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution protects free speech and the freedom to read and write. And whereas the state constitution states that religion shall forever be encouraged. And whereas specifically the state constitution of Michigan of 1963, Article 7, Education, Encouragement of Education, states that religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind; schools and the means of education shall forever be encouraged. And resolved, the State Board of Education shall affirm that discrimination, including that towards religion is neither acceptable nor tolerated in Michigan public schools. And be it further resolved, the State Board of Education shall ensure that all diverse groups, including religious populations of students, are given the same opportunities and access to literacy and learning of their values and beliefs. And be it further resolved, the State Board of Education shall establish that any school flying a special interest or demographic flag representing a group of students shall allow all groups to fly a flag representing themselves and their special interest or their identifying demographic. And resolved, the State Board of Education established that interest of groups of students, including religion, is promoted the same within the libraries. And be it further resolved, the State Board of Education shall ensure religious groups and populations of students are receiving the like amount as other groups in expenditure of public funds. And be it further resolved, that the State Board of Education update Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Plan to include religion and religious groups of students in their interest, values, and beliefs in the importance of their learning experience. And be it further finally resolved, that the superintendent of the State Board of Education shall distribute this resolution to each district superintendent within the state of Michigan. End of resolution. Please add this to the agenda for the next regular meeting. You will receive a formal email in regards to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry Zike.
Siska.
Siska.
Good afternoon, ladies, gentlemen, unicorns, hems, hers, its, he's, she's, furries, gremlins, goblins, trolls, or whatever else you may feel necessary to identify as today. But with the exception of two of you, what you may not identify as is a body of elected servants that care for our children's mental, physical, and academic well-being. And the resolution you all passed not that long ago, well, you're full of fallacy, and wow. The, let's talk about this one. Digital, you're, the digital and the freedom of read there, you got it, where you talk about digital, does that mean videos? I know you're not going to answer me, but where does it end? Do we get to, like, start having Pornhub in the school library? Maybe we should be a little more specific. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. That's everyone in the room today, and we will move to those online.
Full of fallacy.
Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Will you please mute the YouTube in the background and give us your name and where you're calling from?
Yes, okay. I'll put it mute now. I'll mute the sound.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you give us your name and where you're calling from?
Sure, Russ Ballant from Detroit.
Very good. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hello, I hope I'm being heard. My name is Russ Ballant. I'm in Detroit, and I'm calling regarding the proposed Michigan Education Department that would, is being created in the executive branch of government. I'm deeply disturbed by this because I do not believe governors should be running education in Michigan, and the constitution, constitutional language has been so clear since the 1963 Constitution was formed that all management and supervision and planning for education, especially K-12 education in the state of Michigan, is done through the elected State Board of Education. There is no provision in Article 5 for the, which enumerates the powers of the governor, to give the governor any power whatsoever in K-12 education. I sent each of you an email unfortunately late last night, and I attached my objections there, but I'll simply say that we have several decades of experience of governors running education in, you know, some aspects of education in Michigan. And in Detroit, we've had many painful consequences from those activities. Our school district, after, you know, the 18 years of, you know, the first state intervention in 1999 from Governor Engler, the continuation of practices by Governor Granholm, and then the policies of Rick Snyder, our district was one-fourth the size of when they started their so-called saving Detroit public schools. It was in a surplus and had rising test scores every year in the 1990s. It was growing enrollment every year in the 1990s. Not huge leaps, but it was growing. It wasn't declining. Within a few years of the state takeover, we had $180 million of debt instead of the $93 million surplus we had when the state took over. The scores dropped. We had one governor who actually took 15 schools and created his own personal school district, appointed his own board. The excesses boggle the mind. There was never enough critical fight back on these issues.
Thank you, sir, for your public comment. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I sure can. Thank you. Can you please state your name and where you're calling from?
My name is Aleah Moore. I'm calling from Detroit, Michigan.
Beautiful. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your public comment.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for taking my public comment. I thank a friend that let me know the opportunity was available. I am a product of Detroit Public Schools, came out in 1998. The state came in in 1999 and literally stripped my precious district to the point where we are at Detroit Public Schools Community District. I do blame Governor John Engler, all the way down to Jennifer Granholm, and then finally Governor Rick Snyder. I did have the opportunity and the privilege to come to the State Board back in 2012 when Governor Rick Snyder was closing a precious school called Oakman Orthopedic Elementary School for absolutely no reason. Fast forward, we're currently into 2023, and we have the illusion of a functioning school board along with a stellar leadership in Dr. Nikolai Vidi, but it's the total opposite. It seems as a stakeholder and a parent of two that have, one has went through the system and one is still in, I still feel this district is being led by emergency management. Dr. Nikolai Vidi and this board have been allowed to get over $1.27 billion in federal funding, but yet our children are still not rising. I am a stakeholder in Detroit, and I'm not going anywhere, but I do want the state to hold DPSCD a little bit more accountable for their decisions financially and for the sake of our children. And then lastly, concerning this literacy money, the $94.4 million, the school board has allowed Dr. Nikolai Vidi to say repeatedly in public meetings that, you know, even though the task force was one of the stipulations the state gave us with this 94.4, he simply said, we don't have to listen to it. So in other words, he doesn't want to hear the voice of the people. So state, as a stakeholder and a former student, I say we need some accountability from this district, and I thank Pamela Pugh and the board for the attempts to try to do so. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
... financially and for the sake of our children. And then lastly, concerning this literacy money, the $94... Hello?
Hello, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. If you would please state your name and where you're calling from, you can begin your public comment.
Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Lester, a school librarian and a board member of the Michigan Association of School Librarians, Masol. I'm also the immediate past president of the American Association of School Librarians. I am calling to say thank you to the Michigan Department of Education for their memorandum on best practices for school library collections that was sent to districts in April. I also wanted to thank the State Board of Education for the resolution and the support of the Freedom to Read, which was adopted on June 13th, 2023. Thank you for reaffirming that certified school librarians serve a critical role in increasing student achievement. Certified school librarians are essential in providing equity of access to curated, age-relevant resources. As stated in the MDE memo, school librarians work diligently to choose titles that accurately reflect the diverse experiences of students, parents, and communities that they serve. In spite of this guidance and support, we are still hearing about administrators pulling materials without following best practices and policies, especially in school districts that do not employ certified school librarians. As such, we look forward to continued partnership with MDE to strengthen access to effective school libraries across our state and to support our students' right to read. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, and thank you again for your support.
Thank you so much.
As stated in the...
Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. If you'll please state your name and where you're calling from, you can begin your three minutes of public comment.
Thank you. My name is Deena Degnan, also known as Miss DeWolfe in Detroit Public Schools, and I'm calling from New York because I was exiled from Michigan for the following reasons. In January, in October of 2021, Dr. Vidi's top cop, Nathaniel Coleman, was sexually harassing me while I was trying to teach 100 kids to read at Brenda Scott Academy. The consequences of that after I went on an FMLA with COVID and anxiety because I couldn't process the fact that somebody of that caliber would come for me. On April 29th, I reported, I reported the sexual harassment, and within two hours, my house was swatted by Detroit Police in an effort to retaliate and scare the crap out of me and my kids. Two weeks later, my son was in ICU at Royal Oak Beaumont. He's autistic, and he is diabetic, and I need the board to protect. What we, I was a decorated Detroit public school teacher, and I lost everything for reporting sexual harassment of Dr. Vidi's top cop. The school board has done nothing to help me because it's their top cop, too. When I went to the DIA for my fake retirement party, two weeks later, it was standing behind me to intimidate me even more. All I wanted was an ADA so I could work at virtual school so I wasn't under every one of her surveillance cameras while I worked. I am begging you to intervene in this, please. I am begging for your advice. I'm begging for legal counsel. I'm begging for a quorum. These DPSD people cabinet, they're out of control. I align with everything Aleah Moore said. There needs to be a complete investigation of the whole cover-up created to destroy me and my children because I knew of the corruption. Please help me. I beg of the board, please help me. I've exhausted every one of my resources. They did this to me while my mom was dying. Please, help. Please help. Dina DeWolfe, decorated teacher, I won a Detroit Genius Award for my work around literacy. I was a co-super in the state of Michigan. I lost everything for telling the truth and trying to get a guy who was probably a predator against our kings and queens out of this state and not in the high position of a DPSPD. I tried to file a police report with the Detroit Police. They closed every door on me for a year until I was able to. I have an EEOC. I have a, um, write-to-sue letter. I need your help. I need you guys to stand up for my children, please. I beg you. I beg you.
Thank you for your comment, ma'am. Mike, are there any other callers today that have pre-registered for public comment?
Those are all the callers.
Thank you so much. That concludes public comment.
Thank you to those who provided public comment today. The board, we're standing at one thirty-three. Uh, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three? A move by Senator Bullock. Do we have a second? Second by Rep. Lipton. Got the whole legislature here. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call, vote please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board. Uh, next item on today's agenda is an update on diversity, equity, and inclusion. This presentation will provide information on four efforts that cross offices within MDE and are under the broad umbrella of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Among others in the department, the efforts support Goal Two, to improve early literacy, and Goal Seven, to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan. We welcome our presenters, at least two of them. Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent, Division of the Educator, Student, and School Supports. Ms. Renee Garcia, Director of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Do we anticipate Dr. Edwards and Dr. Levann joining us? We do. Uh, Dr. Corinne Edwards, Director of the Office of Educational Supports, and Dr. Sarah Kate Levann, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, will be with them as well. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good afternoon, board. Um, we do have two additional presenters who are involved, and we will go ahead and set the stage as their contributions come later in the presentation. Today, we will highlight via a succinct data review the alignment of diversity, equity, and inclusion to Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan Goal Five, which is to increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. Additionally, Ms. Renee Garcia, Director of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, will share the focus and relevance of DEI to the selected data-driven efforts that will be shared by Dr. Corinne Edwards, Director of the Office of Educational Supports, and Dr. Sarah Kate Levann, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence. Let's begin with Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan Goals. We know that when there is greater success with the developmental upstream goals, there is greater success with the developmental downstream goals. Specifically, greater success with Goals One, Two, Three, and Four create greater success with Goals Five and Six. With that in mind, let's take a look at Goal Five, increasing the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. As we see here, the percentage of students who graduated in twenty twenty-two after four years of high school was eighty-one percent. Goal Five focuses on increasing this percentage. In order to increase the percentage, it is helpful to break the data up into subgroup information, which we'll do now. Here we see the graduation rates from the twenty twenty-one, twenty-one school year by ethnicity, and each of the groups are listed along with their associated calculation or data rate. And for the same school year, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, by socioeconomic status. And here on this chart, we see graduation rates from that same school year for students with disabilities and students without disabilities. And now moving on to the next dat- dataset, this chart shows the graduation rates from twenty-one, twenty-two school year by students who are, who are identified as English learners and those who are not. Across different ethnic groups, socioeconomic groups, disability status, and English learner status, there are substantial gaps far greater than there should be. We're about reducing those gaps to the absolute extent possible. As such, we will now hear from Director Renee Garcia, who will share on the efforts of the Office of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Renee?
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, and good afternoon, board. This month is the two-year anniversary of the start of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Through Dr. Rice's vision and leadership, the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion was created to work collaboratively with the rest of the department to develop and support both internal and external efforts and strategies that foster greater fairness, access, and belonging within Michigan schools. When talking about these three terms, we think about diversity as meaning differences in students, teachers, and families, differences that we believe are richness and not stigma. Inclusion as meaning environments that are welcoming and create a sense of belonging, and equity as meaning fairness and access. We work to ensure that students have fair opportunities and access to education and The Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is part of State Superintendent's Office and works across the department on multiple efforts, sometimes in consultation and sometimes in collaboration. As such, the work of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion connects to all eight of Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan Goals, striving to reduce gaps, such as those Dr. Chapman shared when speaking about Goal Five. Today, we are here to share on four specific efforts, two of which are related to Goal Two, improve early literacy, and two of which are related to Goal Seven, increase the numbers of certified teachers in all areas of shortage. Each of the efforts highlighted today can be connected to the research of Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop. Let's hear directly from Dr. Sims Bishop for a moment about her work that originated more than thirty years ago.
We need diverse books because we need books in which children can find themselves, see reflections of themselves. I wrote a piece, maybe nineteen ninety it was published, uh, which I called Mirrors, Windows, and Sliding Glass Doors. Uh, and, and I think that's, that's really why we, um, children need to see themselves reflected, but books can also be windows. Um, and, and so you can, you can look through and see other worlds and see how they match up or don't match up to your own, but the sliding glass door allows you to enter that world as well. And so, uh, that's the reason that, that the diversity needs to go both ways. I mean, it's not just children, uh, who have been underrepresented and marginalized who need these books. It's also the children, uh, who always find their mirrors in the books and therefore get an exaggerated sense of their own self-worth and a false sense of what the world is like because it's, it's, uh, becoming more and more colorful and diverse, uh, as, as time goes on. So I think that's why.
Dr. Sims Bishop's analogy of books as mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors is powerful. Books that serve as mirrors offer readers self-affirmation as they see their own lives and experiences as part of the larger human experience. Additionally, books are sometimes windows, offering views of the world that may be real or imagined, familiar or strange. Dr. Bishop emphasized the concept that all readers must have experiences where they see themselves, where they consider different perspectives, and where they're able to step into the lived experiences of others as though stepping through a sliding glass door. We use this analogy more broadly, and in the efforts that we are highlighting today, we refer to students seeing themselves reflected in their schools through books, history, and their educators, and providing students opportunities to learn about others through books, history, and their educators that provide different views into cultures and experiences. This supports students to become more fully prepared for the diverse world in which they will live. Dr. Edwards will now share information about diversity in literature and teaching comprehensive history, two efforts the Office of Educational Supports and the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion collaborate on.
Thank you, Renee. Good afternoon. Over the past year, the Office of Educational Supports Literacy and Educational Experiences Units have intentionally focused work efforts on Goal Two by providing technical assistance and professional growth opportunities for Michigan educators, both teachers and leaders, to increase, enhance, and support their readiness and ability to develop and maintain literacy learning spaces and activities that are reflective of all of our students. If every learner in Michigan's public schools is to have an inspiring, engaging, and caring learning environment that fosters creative and critical thinkers, then all students must have equitable access to high-quality instruction that embraces and celebrates each student regardless as to his or her circumstance, providing multiple windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors across all content areas. Paraphrasing a quote from our State Superintendent, Dr. Michael Rice, he says, "Children engage more with literature and learning when they can see themselves mirrors and learn about others' windows through text, coupled with the opportunity to engage in learning experiences that capture their curiosity and interest. When children engage more deeply, the power of words motivates them to read more. More reading builds greater fluency, greater vocabulary, greater background knowledge, and greater comprehension, all of which children take to their next reading." Well said. Our diversity and literature initiative, coupled with our teaching comprehensive series, provides a framework for teaching and learning that supports Michigan educators' efforts to improve literacy achievement through the provision of equitable, diverse, and inclusionary In twenty twenty, the OES literacy team began pushing forth the efforts of diversity in literature, building upon Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop's ideology of those terms, as well as, uh, the sliding glass doors, mirrors, and windows being essential in education. In February of twenty twenty-one, the MDE hosted a virtual conference, "Building Mirrors and Windows: Children Seeing Themselves and Others in the Literature That We Teach," featuring Dr. Goldie Muhammad, who is the author of Cultivating Genius and Understanding, excuse me, and Unearthing Joy, as our guest speaker. Since then, the MDE has presented various educator webinars, professional development sessions, and other related learning opportunities to support and in the advance literacy and learning through an equity lens. As one aspect of the settlement of the Detroit Literacy Lawsuit, Michigan's Governor Whitmer asked the MDE to produce a document to advise school districts throughout the state as to how they might use evidence-based literacy strategies, initiatives, and programs to improve access to literacy and literacy proficiency, with special attention to reducing class, racial, and ethnic disparities. With that, our literacy unit released the Equity and Literacy Guide. This document is divided into five broad sections. Practices for creating engaging literacy learning environments, the daily involvement of students in literacy, the scientific and technical aspects of literacy, the role of family engagement in literacy, and resources to support equity in literacy. Additionally, the MDE released a collaborative work effort celebrating authors of color and their works of literature, which highlights authors of color and their works that lend to the DEI efforts in Michigan, and offers additional resources for educators to utilize in their learning and teaching. Lastly, the literacy team worked with the Library of Michigan to release a weekly calendar highlighting diverse authors and showcasing African-American History Month with literature. To further enhance and highlight this effort, the MDE led and facilitated student interviews where Michigan students discuss their favorite works of literature and how they have been impacted by those selected works. Continuing to build on these diversity efforts, uh, the Diversity in Literature twenty twenty-one, the men, excuse me, the MDE continued to host various educator learning opportunities to support and advance equitable literacy and learning educational practices. Following MDE's twenty twenty-one collaboration with Dr. Muhammad, the literacy unit again hosted a three-part virtual webinar series, The Role of Diversity in Literature That We Teach. This series featured new keynote speakers with each session, each of whom delivered their tailored message around the topic. In October, Nikki Giovanni focused on history and the purpose of having diverse literature in classroom libraries, in addition to using inclusive text to aid in instructional practices. In January, Shonda Buchanan discussed her experiences growing up in Michigan, where she experienced a lack of diverse materials and the lessons she learned throughout her academic and personal life in order to incorporate the importance of exposing children to diverse materials. Rounding out our series in April, Derek Slack focused on motivating and inspiring educators to reject complacency, remove barriers that may be preventing upward progress, and remain focused on their goals. Earlier this year, the MDE, in collaboration with the Michigan's Multi-Tier Systems of Support Tactical Assistance Center, or the MYMTSSTA Center, hosted an in-person literacy event, the Twenty Twenty-Three MDE Diversity and Literature Symposium, The How and Why of Literacy. This was held on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Over six hundred Michigan educators learned and networked in support of Michigan students and Goal Two of Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan to improve early literacy achievement. The conference opened with a keynote from Dr. Goldie Muhammad. This year, Dr. Muhammad's presentation blended history, theory, and engaging, excuse me, engaging approaches for culturally responsive student-centered learning. Attendees also enjoyed an eye-opening student panel during lunch. Educators heard firsthand from our student presenters the positive and negative impacts of having or not having access to diverse classroom resources and how literacy skills affect student growth. There were breakout sessions covering the science of reading, diverse resources, and much more. The conference wrapped up with an end note from Emily Hanford from, uh, the podcast Sold a Story, in which we reflected upon the history of literacy theory and instruction. During this conference, the MDE literacy team was also excited to share the first copies of the diverse classroom library's resource with the educators in attendance at the symposium. attendance at the symposium. We're pleased to share that our literacy unit team is currently planning for the MDE's March 2024 Diversity in Literature Symposium. We will again partner with the MyMTSSA Tech Center and other educational organizations to engage Michigan educators in a full day of learning, sharing, and making connections in an efforts to increase literacy achievement through an equity lens. Through surveys, feedback, and one-on-one conversations, our literacy team continues to hear the call from our educators for additional resources for guidance around diversity in literature. With that, earlier this spring, the MDE released the guidance document, "Diverse Classroom Libraries: Mirrors, Windows, and Sliding Glass Doors to Lifelong Literacy and Learning." This document, created in collaboration with Leaders in Education, the Region Eight Comprehensive Center, and the MDE, provides educators, school leaders, and district leaders helpful guidance to support the full range of Michigan's diverse public school student population and tools to navigate their increasingly diverse world. The Diverse Classroom Libraries Guidance Document intends to increase educators' understanding of the benefit of creating and making available to students diverse classroom libraries, their knowledge of practices to inform what should be included in diverse classroom libraries, and their ability to effectively engage students in lifelong literacy learning through the use of equitable practices and engaging content. Turning our attention to the Teaching Comprehensive History Series, or Comprehensive Teaching of U.S. and World History, again, this is the vision of our state superintendent. It is through this vision that we advance our efforts to provide an assurance of Michigan students having opportunities to learn history from a comprehensive stance. The MDE remains committed to the teaching of history through diverse viewpoints while highlighting historical movements and moments that have shaped our nation. An essential part of MDE's efforts to improve comprehensive history instruction is to support teachers with opportunities to expand their knowledge of particular areas. The intent of the webinar series was to help educators learn more about historical movements, events, and people that are part of the rich, diverse history of our country and our world. Providing educator learning experiences such as these, along with the availability of related resources, support the provision of disciplinary literacy efforts through an equity lens, helping educators to understand the complexities of teaching Michigan's diverse student populations. Additionally, these efforts support their ability to plan for meaningful, engaging, content-rich instruction that values the diverse cultures, backgrounds, and lived experiences of our students. In turn, literacy skills and development is the gateway for our students to access these comprehensive historical learning experiences. Throughout the 2022-23 school year, the MDE hosted eight different webinars throughout the Teaching Comprehensive Series, which totaled about 19 separate learning sessions. This was done in collaboration with institutions of higher education to assist educators with the teaching of and learning about comprehensive history through thematic instruction. Our 2022-23 webinar series presenters included, from Michigan State University, Dr. Wake and Dr. Louie, who shared with us a journey on Asian-American history, immigration, and citizenship movements. In October, we heard from our own Library of Michigan staff, Ms. Babarski and Ms. Darrow. They provided our teachers with primary and secondary instructional learning resources. In January, we heard from the University of Michigan's Dr. Branwine, who shared with us learning through civil rights amendments up to the civil rights movement. In February, Eastern Michigan University's Dr. Okofor shared with us civil rights movement information and learning. In March, Dr. Harris from Michigan State University shared with us about equal rights. And in April and May, we had a combined series on disability rights movement from Dr. Skelton, who serves at Indiana University and Purdue University. Rounding out our series for this year, in May, Wayne State University's Dr. Chinea led us through a learning journey on the labor rights movement. And rounding out the work effort in June was Dr. Dorambos from Oakland University, who shared with our educators promising practices and pedagogy around social studies teaching. The purpose of social studies is to promote the knowledge, skills, intellectual processes, and dispositions required of people to be actively engaged in fulfilling their responsibility of civic participation. As members of a culturally diverse, democratic society in an interdependent world, young people need to learn how to make informed and reasoned decisions for the public good. The Teaching Comprehensive Series presents this access for students through engagement that reflects those mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors we referenced earlier. For many, literacy means different things from a wide variety of perspectives. Today's society demands an urgent need to move beyond content-based teaching and the application of different discipline-specific skill sets, e.g., thinking like a historian, a geographer, economist. But more critically, looking at literacy is the next step in -- excuse me, is the next cerebral step as students move toward an approach to see and read about themselves and the world. Such supports for learning through an equity and literacy-focused lens is a constant and should always be available for educators and the public. Our current legislation is lifting social studies as a primary learning space for cultural competency and the teaching of comprehensive history learning, as referenced in Michigan's Social Studies standards, through the provision of $6 million in state funding to support local school districts to advance this work efforts in their classrooms. This is an indication and an acknowledgement of the work, the good work, MDE has done advocating for the teaching of comprehensive history in Michigan. I'll now turn the presentation over to Dr. Sarah Caint-Lavanne.
Thank you. And good afternoon. I have the pleasure of talking with you about select DEI efforts around Goal Seven, increasing the numbers of certified teachers in all areas of shortage. First, I'll talk a little bit about teacher workforce data. It's very brief. It's kind of a preview also, and to set a context for what you'll hear in, I think it's December when we come back and talk about Goal Seven. It'll also give you a little bit of a context when I talk about the two programs later in the presentation, future Proud Michigan educator programs that are showing promise in increasing access for individuals, especially individuals from diverse backgrounds, in gaining certification and becoming educators. Okay. So, Goal Seven, we talk about it in terms of increasing the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage, but really, it's been operationalized to be three dimensions. It's increasing the quantity, the quality, and the diversity of the teaching workforce. Today, I'm going to talk about the quantity, and I'll talk about the diversity of the teaching workforce. Okay. So, this is our newest data. When I think about the quantity within the educator workforce, we think about one of the metrics, which is teacher preparation, enrollment, or production. This is our newest data. What you'll notice, there are two little asterisks at the bottom of the table. The 2122 academic year, this data, these data are still being verified. They'll be verified in the fall, so just a preview. But what we can see here is that our production is quite high compared to the previous years. We have the greatest number of enrollees this past year, and it's been the greatest number, and you'll see the green highlighting, as compared to the 2012-2013 year. And the same goes for the total. So when you think about the entire enrollment, so enrollees and completers, we've had the highest number total in the preparation pipeline this past year as compared to the 2013-2014 academic year. Another data point we talk about is ethnic diversity of teachers, and this graph shows just that. We have longitudinal data that we look at demographics of teachers, teacher populations. On the Y-axis is percent of FTEs of teachers who are representative of diverse ethnic backgrounds, and this is against the X-axis, which is academic years. And what we can see here is that over the past seven years, we've had a pretty significant increase in the numbers of teachers and percentage of teachers who represent diverse ethnic backgrounds. So between 2016-17 academic year and 2022-23 academic years, we've had a 2% increase. But we know percentages don't always tell the story, the full story. What that translates to is about 1,800 educators that represent diverse backgrounds, which is pretty significant. And while we know this is significant, we know there's a lot of work to be done, especially to align our teacher populations with our student populations. We can drill down even further in our data and look at populations of teachers in reference to student populations. And I've just chosen two. I've chosen the two largest student populations so we can look at the teacher populations that are analogous. So our two largest student populations are Black African-American and Hispanic Latino. And when we look at the two populations of teachers that are analogous, we see that over the last year, the 2223 academic year, we've had an increase of more than 1,300 Black African-American full-time equivalents, so teachers, in our population. And this is about a 7.2%. These individuals represent 7.2% of the workforce. And then the same can be looked at for Hispanic Latino, and we see that we have an increase of more than 200 Hispanic Latino teachers in our workforce, which is about a 1.4%, which is 1.4% of the workforce. But when thinking -- no problem. No problem. She's very excited for this video. When thinking about the importance of diversity, research consistently shows that students do better when they see themselves in their educators. But it's not just research that tells us this. Teacher candidates like Anna Murphy, who is featured in our Proud Michigan Educator video, also tells us this. Students tell us this. Teachers tell us this. And this is an important message to hear. And so we're going to hear from Anna Murphy, who's featured in one of our Proud Michigan Educator videos, the importance of representation and diversity in the teacher workforce, not just for students, but also for teacher candidates like her.
Growing up, I had one Black woman as an educator ever. And I remember being in her classroom. It always felt like home to me. It always felt good to know that I was surrounded by an educator who looked like me and who just supported me and loved me through every aspect of it. So my why is for every student who has ever felt unrepresented within and outside of the classroom, just to be that light and to be that piece of home for them. So representation is everything inside of the classroom. Growing up in Chicago, I grew up in a very diverse environment. So coming to places like Mount Pleasant, where I have one or two Black students, I can see in their eyes just the admiration and the flame to know that, hey, if Ms. Murphy can do it, I can do it too. So, representation is everything, everything. Teaching is one of the most important careers to ever graced earth, and I think it's an honor to have the privilege to carry it on. My name is Anna Murphy, and I am a proud future Michigan educator.
So, representation matters. And so the question is, what are we doing about increasing the diversity of our workforce? So we're doing a number of things. I'm just going to highlight two today. There, two of our Proud Michigan Educator, future Proud Michigan Educator programs, both are grant-funded. Both are in about year two or three of the implementation. Both started out with very small amounts of money, and we've been fortunate to get large amounts of money this past year. And when I say large, I mean the $175 million. So we're excited to keep these going. What I'm going to share with you today is preliminary data from the past couple of years, because we don't have data about current implementation. And just keep in mind, these are longer or mid-to-long-term strategies, so they will yield significant results in a few years. So the first one is our Grow Your Own, Support Staff to Teachers. And this is a grant program that seeks to support individuals teaching or engaging in any activities, meaning employed, in schools currently. So they could be paraprofessionals. They could be janitorial staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, or they could be teachers who are looking to expand their certification. So we had a grant in the fiscal year '22. We had a small amount of money, as I said. We had to prioritize certain areas of study. We prioritized grants to special education, English as a second language, and bilingual education. We awarded 159 candidates grants, so anybody who is currently employed in a school. And as of June of this year, already 64 of them have gotten certified. And then let me tell you a little bit about these people. We collect demographic data on all our grants, and what we see is these grants are already yielding individuals who are drastically more diverse than our current teaching population. So as you can see here, they range from American Indian, Alaskan Native, Asian, Black African-American, Hispanic, Latino, and multiracial. And again, these percentages are higher than our current population of teachers. Okay. The second program is really near and dear to my heart. So this one is called the Explore Program, and it's for 6th through 12th grade students to explore teaching as a profession. We've all heard stories about, how did you get into the teaching profession? And usually, it's through a camp experience, or I tutored at church, or I was taking care of a little neighbor. We also see research shows that when they're in, when children are engaged, or young adults are engaged in programming in schools that are like the Explore Program, they're more likely to go into the education profession. We chose to create this Explore Program that's a very flexible set of curriculum. It's free to the districts. It's all-inclusive in terms of a district could pick it up as is, or they could adapt it to their local needs. What is unique about this set of programming is it emphasizes inclusion and identity. And the other piece is that districts can really adapt it to, again, whatever gaps they see in their workforce. And the other piece is, Michigan has had a really rich history of career and technical education programs. We have strong career and technical education programs in Michigan. But we were finding that some students didn't have access to these programs, and so we wanted to create the Explore Program as a way into exploring education as a profession if you didn't have CTE, or to bridge to CTE programs. Okay. So, in our original grant, we awarded 44 grantees, which ended up being 458 students and 150 buildings. Of these 458 students, you can see on the screen, 13% were English learners, 54 were students of color, 62% economically disadvantaged, and 33% male, which, again, shows greater diversity than our current workforce. But what's really powerful for me about the stories that we hear about the districts that have these programs is that they were intentionally creating the programs to mirror their student bodies, and that these, the students they were hoping to get into the programs were the ones that did choose to come into the programs. So, for example, I believe you all saw a presentation from Holland Public Schools. I can tell you that 35% of their students in their Explore Program are male, 40% are Hispanic, and 5% are English learners. So again, great diversity in their Explore Program. All right. And I get to switch gears just a bit and tell you about our new money that we've received. We received a lot of money, and it's amazing to be able to support people to get into the educator workforce. Three quick ones right now. These are all a form of scholarship or fellowship or financial support to get people over the hump to to get people over the hump to become certified. So the first one is scholarships for people who are in teacher preparation programs. The second one, the Grow Your Own Program, is grants to districts for a no-cost pathway to support staff to obtain certification. And the third one is a stipend for student teachers. So it's anyone participating is as a teacher candidate in student teaching. And as you can see on the board, this is quite an investment that our legislature has made into supporting people to become educators. The second initiative that we have that we're going to start is mentoring and induction. And we have $50 million to support grants to districts for mentor stipends, training and expenses to support mentors, mentorship, release time of individuals who are mentoring new teachers in the field. There's also some financial support in there to develop standards and resources for districts, as well as for us to do some program evaluation to see program impact. And then the last two, the first one is a rural credentialing hub. That one is to help individuals who have previously either dropped out of or stopped educator preparation programs for a variety of reasons. It could have been because of COVID or financial supports that they didn't have any longer. This one is to create wraparound services to help them cross the finish line and get certified. And then the last thing I have to tell you about is a student loan repayment. And this is an allocation to districts and ISDs for implementing a student loan repayment
Thanks, Dr. Levand. Dr. Rice and Board, again, we appreciate the opportunity to share with you through the lens of our Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, the efforts meriting data-driven outcomes by way of Goals 5, 2, and 7, as summarized here on the screen. As we strive to meet Goal 5 by increasing the number of students who graduate from high school, it is important to intentionally address Goal 2, improve early literacy achievement through diversity in literature and teaching comprehensive history. Additionally, we strive to address Goal 7, increase the numbers of certified teachers in all areas of shortage by increasing the quantity, quality, and diversity of the teacher workforce by way of efforts, including but not limited to future Proud Michigan Educator programs. Again, we thank you, and we will entertain any questions and or comments at this time.
Thank you, presenters. Boards, as you form your questions and your comments, reflect upon the structure of the presentation of our four presenters, please, that they began with an output goal. They began downstream, not as far downstream as you can. We could have gone to Goal 6, which we presented on and which Leo presented on in June, the post-secondary credential percentage of adults, 25 to 64 in the state. But it was a pretty far downstream goal on graduation rates. And then you back up and you talk about what's upstream that affects downstream. So we talked this morning about Goal 8, adequate and equitable school funding. You spoke today about addressing teacher shortage. Those are as upstream as you get, financial and human resources. And then, Dr. Edwards, you course down toward literacy, our Goal 2, which is affected by funding, which is affected by staffing, which is also affected by how we teach and what we teach. So reflect upon different efforts to address diversity, equity, and inclusion at different points on this continuum, if you will, on this journey. So that said, board members, questions and comments? Ms. Snyder?
You had to connect it all, because it was a little bit all over the map. You know, I'll just say a few things that really are intended for accountability as it relates to the concept of diversity, equity, and inclusion and the things that you've talked about. There are a number of things that you presented that were very good. But we do live in a state where we're writing laws that charge others as hateful if they misgender someone, and that's not inclusive. And so the terms DEI are associated with things like that. We live in a state where the Department of Education does teacher insurfaces that encourages teachers to withhold information on gender transitioning from parents. That doesn't increase access to students. We live in a state where we've had local school board members explicitly display racism. I brought a resolution before our board about that. And they themselves administer DEI services in their communities. So from an accountability standpoint, DEI has to be considered truly what it is that you've defined here, because there are so many situations where it is, in fact, not welcoming, not inclusive, doesn't help access to education, and instead divides people. And so just those few examples I just shared, we have to continue to go back to the drawing board on what it is that you mean by that. Because if someone's watching from the outside this presentation, and they say, oh, this is what DEI looks like and it sounds like, and it sounds great on a number of levels, maybe some disagreeing points, but then this is what they're actually experiencing in their community, it's not actually going to translate to equity for them or access for them. It's not a welcoming environment for them. Their differences aren't truly accepted, if you will. So just a greater number of comments that I wanted to add to.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other board members? Other board members? Sometimes there's a little bit of a lull in the afternoon as lunch begins to settle in.
I answered all the questions. I wrote some down, but they ended up answered.
Okay. All right, very good. Ms. Taylor? No? Okay. Dr. Pritchett?
My only question is really a request. Slide 19, you referenced the Diverse Classroom Libraries document. I wondered if we could have a link to that or a copy of it. However, other than that, a lot of divergence within the presentation. So I appreciate the information and the efforts. And we appear as though, at least at this point, to be starting to crack through, especially teacher, on the educators and the professionals within the school districts as far as getting more diversity. That is certainly a goal, well worth the effort. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Pugh and Dr. Robinson?
I'll just, I do want to say thank you, because we do get a lot of requests. I know I do, about what are we doing to counter the hate that we're seeing, you know, especially as we look down the 75 corridor. But over the years, the last few years, where we've seen this grow and extremism grow. So it is good to have this presentation. It's always good to be able to really quickly pull out what are we doing to counter, you know, the unfortunate things that we're seeing across this country and within our state. So thank you, and thank you to the department for what you all are doing.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Dr. Robinson?
I want to just echo, thank you. This is really important work. The teacher shortage always reminds me of being in a boat, and you're going down the river, and the boat's leaking. And it seems like all of our efforts are at kind of getting some water out of the boat so we can keep on going without addressing why people are leaving the classroom. So I just, and I'm not asking for an answer, because if we all had one, we'd fix a teacher shortage like that. But I hope that we're going to also keep our focus on how we can keep current teachers in the classroom, how we can improve working conditions for teachers so that they want to remain in the classroom. I'm all for, I mean, I work with student teachers every day, so I'm all for the student-teacher stipends. I'm all for all of the things that are in this report. But what I hear from my friends who are teachers is, hey, we're over here, too. What are you doing for us? What can we get? You know, what's happening in the schools to keep us engaged and motivated? So I know we're focusing on one part of the problem more than the other part here, but just a plea to keep on thinking about our colleagues that are in the schools now and how we can make things better for them so that we don't have to replace as many teachers.
Good point. Just a few thoughts on that. Additional funding is a piece of that. Compensation is a piece of that. Working conditions, a piece of that. The support around teachers, and by extension, around kids, a piece of that. Teachers need to feel, as you know, efficacious from your work, both as a K-12 or pre-K-12 educator and as a higher educator. They need to feel efficacious. They need to be supported so they can properly support children. The governor recommended retention bonuses in the fiscal year '23 budget. Legislature did not fund those retention bonuses. Governor came back in her executive budget request for fiscal year '24 with loan forgiveness, an idea that we had recommended a year and a half earlier in our set of teacher shortage recommendations. The legislature approved the loan forgiveness. And obviously, it does not affect every veteran educator, but it affects some educators who are currently in the schools, and particularly the youngest ones, who struggle with the lowest salaries and then those expenses coming out of school. So those are examples of things that governor, legislature, department are working on to make the profession better. Because I agree 100%. It's not just about the upstream pipeline. It's about the downstream pipeline as well. The other thing that was mentioned by Dr. Levand was this issue of the mentoring. And you heard this from Dr. Golzinski and Mr. Simmons earlier, $50 million over five years around mentoring. You know that while teacher mentoring was required by statute, there was no money associated with it until the fiscal year '24 budget. There was also no requirement to mentor other groups of people, including but not limited to administrators. So there's going to be more conscious mentoring, more statutorily required mentoring, and more funding associated with that mentoring. So I think that also helps on the backend of the pipeline. But we have work to do, there's no doubt. We've made progress. We have lots of progress left to go as well. And I think part of the power of the presentation is so much of what we do in the department is about diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's about all kids. It's about a welcoming for all children, recognizing that schools are not equally welcoming for all of our children, depending upon where you are, who you are, who your teacher is, who your administrators are, how the school is structured, what is said about you, the extent to which a harm is repaired in school. They're not equally welcoming. But I like to believe that we are more welcoming than we once were. I like to believe that our arms are out to a greater degree than they once were, not simply associated with students with disabilities, but with English learners, with students of all shapes and sizes and stripes and ethnicities and languages spoken at home, and, and, and. Not an easy gig. And to go from a theory to a practice of welcoming, of diversity, of inclusion is far easier to talk about than to make happen. But I think our special educators in the department and across the state would argue that that, too, is an equity initiative. It's certainly a diversity and inclusion initiative. And I think the same is true for those who educate English learners, those who educate homeless youth, foster care youth, a wide range of young people. You shouldn't solely feel comfortable in schools if you are a member of a majority. You should feel comfortable in schools because you are a member of a school community. And I think that's the power of the presentation. And I appreciate the leadership of the four of you, Dr. Edwards, Dr. Chapman, soon-to-be Dr. Garcia, and Dr. Levand, that your work and the work of many others in the department and across the state really are working to make our schools more welcoming for our young people, recognizing that so many of them feel othered and feel like they are less visible or invisible. And if that's ever been you, you understand what I'm talking about. And if it hasn't been you, it would be hard to explain it to you in a board presentation. Board members, any other reflections? Just a note to Dr. Edwards' point on comprehensive history instruction, because the work that's been done by OES, by the Office of Educational Support, Dr. Edwards heads up and DES that Dr. Chapman heads up, and the work of Renee Garcia and Scott Kennick, is work that's being done with universities across the state and with university professors across the state who are really leaning into sharing of basic history with our social studies teachers so that they, in turn, can share that basic history on themes and movements and peoples with our young people, because so much of our history is cut up by chronology. Former social studies teacher Pritchett, as you well know. And to teach a person chronologically has a value in some regard. But it's hard to remember a whole lot of chronological histories. You don't have a whole lot of cognitive pegs on which to put that information. But if you teach history from a thematic perspective or movement perspective, children are able to, first of all, I think the history is more engaging. And second of all, they're able to retain more history and go back and add to that historical knowledge moving forward. The other thing is that we present it under Goal Number 2, because to Mr. McMillan's point, while the science of literacy is hugely important, and we're not only not walking away from that, we're leaning into it. It's not simply about the how of reading, it's the why of reading. And we have to give children a range of reasons to read. And why Sarah Kate Levand reads, why scientist Levand reads, and why social studies aficionado Pritchett reads, may be two very different things. Why scientist Pugh reads and why lawyer Lipton reads, two different things. So we've got to get kids in a whole wide range of ways so that they're interested in books. Because what we know is simply teaching them how to read doesn't generate the fluency and the knowledge which they bring to each new text moving forward. And so this really isn't, this is really an educational movement writ large, that if kids don't feel a relevance to their education, they're not going to engage in their education. And that graduation rate, which should be higher, is not going to ascend markedly higher unless kids feel that the education that we provide them on a day-to-day basis in 841 local school districts and 3,400 schools across the state not going to engage meaningfully lest they perceive that education related not only to their present but their futures as well. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. I appreciate you, presenters. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
The board, it is 2:30, and we are at the report of the President of the State Board of Education.
And I don't really have a formal report, but I do want to report that I had a really good conversation with an educator recently, in the recent weeks, who was telling me about different approaches in working with two different school districts that she's been a part of as it relates to access to books in schools and how parents and community and experts and educators come together and determine what books are available to students and how opt-out is arrived at. And I really, really would impress upon us to maybe have some examples of what's going on at the local level, because we keep having these conversations. And I just want to make sure that the broader public is aware of how these issues are handled and how we are working with and encouraging the local districts to address these issues. And just, again, hoping that we can do that. I know that superintendent, former superintendent, Dr. Pritchett, has given us some examples. But it would really be good if we could have that presentation and have that on a board agenda very soon, as soon as possible. Because we know we get misinformation that goes and runs amok. So we want to make sure that we-- that we get that out there. The other piece that I'll just take this moment to bring up is constraint and seclusion. And Dr. Rice, I know we've talked about that. I know you took the information that was received and you will speak to the person who brought that up here personally. But anything else that you think that we need to know as a board? I know that we've done presentations on this previously, and I know that that is something that we do not condone or allow. And so I just, if there's any opportunities to address that as well in upcoming meetings, and I'll lean on you to decide that. But that is all that I will share today.
Thank you very much. It's 2:33. How are we doing on PowerPoint, ladies? We're ready to roll? So we are approaching the beginning of the school year, board, so it's a good thing to center us on schoolchildren. So a little mini video of schoolkids across the state. Ms. Justice, if you would do us the honors and the justice. That's a good point. There are your peeps, Ellen. If it stops there, that's a good place for it to stop. So in Bullet Creek, I went out with the kids to the creek. And I wasn't dressed as well as they were dressed for the creek, but I did okay until the kids started to go in the water after frogs. And I was like so overdressed for that. But the good news is, little Remy, who's the girl in the third of four pictures, she had the frog. They told her, you know, you might want to put it back in the water at some point. So she did. And then she decided she was going to go back in and grab it. And six years old, bam, got that frog. Up she came. And her little partner on the side was delighted to stand in for the picture. I do not know if she put the handprint on my back, but someone did. And Karen Carefoot, who was with me on that visit, captured that maybe not so flattering final picture. Thank you very much, Ms. Justice. We're starting school not simply this month, but this week in certain places. That Flint begins with children tomorrow. Flint Community Schools begins with children tomorrow. So we wish Flint Community students, staff, parents, as well as student staff and parents across the state, all the best for a great 2023, 2024 school year. By the time we meet again, every child in the state of Michigan will have begun school. And whether you're on a balanced calendar or not, this is the month, this 30-day period is the month when young people begin. And we're very, very hopeful, indeed optimistic, that this will be the most normal of school years for our 1.4 million public schoolchildren in the state. Congratulations to Ms. Candace Jackson. We welcome you to the table.
Thank you.
It is not the view, and it's not a room with a view, but it is the table, and we welcome you to it. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations to you and the Regional Teachers of the Year. We look forward to working with you and the R Toys during the year. And boy, those are all the comments that I have. And now, I get the pleasure of...
Dr. Rice, are we still on number 11?
We are. We are. My report.
Yeah.
Says that it was.
I have a question about I, report on grant rewards, before we move on to 12.
Okay, sure.
First of all, and I could be wrong, but this is the first time that it's, that the grants are not listed on the agenda. Maybe it has in the past, I just went back a little bit.
So if you click on that link?
No, I understand that, but the public's not going to click on that link necessarily. I mean, I guess they could, but I, you know, because one of them is the $20 million Teach for America grant. And I guess I was just wondering, so we've been talking a little bit about Teach for America, is that says the grant date was last month? So is that the $20 million? I think Mr. Dr. Robinson said $30 million in the last number of years, and so this is 20 of that 30 that was granted last month?
It would be the fiscal year 23 funding, it would not be 24, because we're not into 24 yet.
Okay. So...
So it's not about the TFA award that you heard about in the presentation?
I know, that was $5 million. So this is, but this is $20 million?
It is.
Okay. And so they are just getting that money now?
They are.
Okay. And so they're going to use $20 million for TFA?
They are.
Detroit? Because it's all going to Detroit?
I believe it is broader than Detroit.
It just says one entity, Detroit, that gets it. When I click on it, that second page, Exhibit A, Teach for Michigan Detroit Regional Office, $20 million.
I understand. But there's only one TFA office in the state.
Okay.
And so that office has had a broader impact over the last year or so than simply Detroit region.
Okay. I mean, you know, when you click on that link, I mean, there is a lot, there's what, 40, 50, no, 53 grants. And I think it feels like it's being hidden. I don't know why we wouldn't, why we're changing it now to not include it on the agenda. So that's just, I think it might be the first time, if it is, I'd just like to say that I don't think that change should be done, but...
Fair enough. It's to the board's pleasure, however we do it. We, one way or the other, the public has access to it, either with a click into the agenda and a click into the grants, or a click into the agenda.
Okay.
So it is a single-click additional.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions on report of the state superintendent?
Okay.
Hearing none. We can go to the presentation of the Teacher of the Year. Ms. Candace Jackson, the newly appointed Michigan Teacher of the Year, is a third-grade teacher at Man Learning Community in Detroit Public School Community District. We welcome Ms. Jackson to present her report today. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. We may or may not test you on the report. Ms. Jackson, welcome.
So good afternoon, Dr. Rice, Madam President, board members, and guests. I am honored to introduce myself as the 2023, 2024 Michigan Teacher of the Year, and I am so honored to be at this table and at this board meeting, and thank you all for having me. I've learned a lot today, just sitting at the table, hearing about the top 10 Strategic Education Plan and update on PA 88. As a parent with a graduate for 2023 and 24, that document would definitely have been helpful, so I'm looking forward to seeing it, to see if I can use it with this graduate, because I was up all night trying to figure out student loans and everything last night for the two that I have in college right now. Throughout my teaching journey, I have been dedicated to creating a nurturing and inclusive environment that empowers the students. And I'm just really excited to be here and to have the floor. I'm an advocate for educational innovation. I've strived to incorporate cutting-edge technology into my classroom and real-world experiences. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a little bit nervous, but I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. So I'm originally from McComb County, Michigan, Clinton Township, and I'm a two-time Michigan State University graduate, so I feel at home here in Lansing. I have my bachelor's degree in elementary education and a double minor in psychology and sociology. I got my master's in curriculum and teaching. And I also have my certification for administration. Since leaving East Lansing in 2001, I've been teaching in Detroit for the last 21, 22 years, most recently as a third-grade teacher and instructional coach at Man Learning Community. I have three sons. You saw two of them here today. My oldest, Jacob, could not be here today, he had to go to class. But you saw Joseph and James, like I said, my incoming college freshman and my incoming college, high school senior. Jacob and Joseph both decided to follow my footsteps, so they're going to be at MSU in the fall. So I'll be back here in a couple of days, moving them both in in college. And James, again, is going into senior year in Livonia Stevenson High School. And my biggest challenge this year is going to be juggling his sports schedule and my MTOI duties, because he keeps me busy. That was the small one, he keeps me busy. I'm a teacher and an instructional coach, like I mentioned before, with Man Learning Community. And the hybrid position that I have, it was pretty cool, because it allowed me to keep one foot into the classroom and also help the teachers around the district. So I was able to blend my teaching duties and my coaching duties to, you know, meet the needs of the teachers and the students in the building. My morning typically involves me doing regular classroom duties, and then in the afternoons, I do things like conduct professional development, one-on-one coaching sessions, maybe analyzing data, doing classroom walkthroughs, and working with the instructional leadership team at my building to develop new and innovative strategies to improve academic achievement and the climate and culture of my building. In addition to that, I am the Director of the Parent Teacher Home Visit in my building and Creator and Co-facilitator of the Girl Empowerment Group. I'm the Director of the Social Committee, and I'm the Lead on Parent and Family Engagement in my building. So I am quite busy at Man Learning Community. And I don't know, I'm going to be sad to be kind of out of the classroom this year, but, you know, I love my job and I hope that I do a good job as the Michigan Teacher of the Year. So as the MTOI, I will champion a few different causes. The need for parental and family engagement is an issue that is near and dear to my heart. I think that parental engagement creates a partnership between families and schools where you cultivate the best possible outcome for the students. It fosters a supportive and nurturing environment that empowers the students to thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Engaged parents also ensure that their kids are here on time. They make sure that their kids come to school regularly, and they actively participate in the learning beyond the classroom, so they're more likely to help with the homework and come to after-school activities. So I think creating that bond between parents and the school is absolutely necessary to create that climate and culture for learning. We want our parents to be active partners, not active consumers. A lot of people think that if the parents are involved, that's enough, but I don't think parental involvement is enough. You want parental engagement. They actually have to be like actively a part of the education. So that's one thing that I'm very passionate about, which is why I am the Lead on most of the parental engagement events at my school. My second thing that I'm very passionate about is climate and culture. I think that a positive climate and culture sets the foundation for a thriving learning community. It creates an atmosphere that fosters mutual respect, and it empowers the students and the educators to reach their full potential. When a school prioritizes climate and culture, it becomes a place where the students feel excited to learn, and the teachers are excited to teach, and everyone feels valued and appreciated. And I'm happy to announce that as a committee, the Michigan Teacher Leadership Advisory Council, that's a mouthful, we've decided that socio-emotional learning would be our collective platform this year. Socio-emotional learning is closely related to climate and culture, because a positive climate and culture creates an environment that supports enhanced SEL. We're going to explore valuable ways to integrate SEL and trauma-informed responses into the classroom. And we've only met one time as a committee, we're going to meet again to solidify our plan, but I think the thinking is maybe create some sort of toolkit so that teachers have something to use in the classroom. So being selected as the Michigan Teacher of the Year has opened me up to various exciting professional and personal opportunities. I've had lots of media coverage, including interviews and features in local and regional outlets that have helped raise awareness to the importance of education. So I've included some pictures of, and I kind of take my boys a lot of places with me when they can, so sometimes one of them will come, sometimes two. Sometimes, if I'm lucky, I can get all three of them to go. I included a picture of me and Devin Skillion. He is a household name in Detroit. I grew up watching him on Channel 4, and I was honored to be interviewed by him on his show called Flashpoint. I also got the Spirit of Detroit Award. This award symbolizes the spirit of Detroit, and it recognizes outstanding achievements in service or acts of heroism or anything that positively impacted the community. So that was a great honor. And I also got similar resolutions in my hometown of Livonia and then also here in Lansing. So there's a picture of me and my boys in front of the Capitol Building. This title has also allowed me to network with other exceptional educators, including meeting and collaborating with several former Teachers of the Year. Earlier this summer, they had a luncheon for me. We were at Bellout at the aquarium, and it was maybe eight or 10 of the previous Teachers of the Year. And they even got me a pretty cool swag bag that says 2024 Michigan Teacher of the Year. So throughout my year of service, I promise to keep my commitment to excellence and celebrate the incredible journey that myself and the other nine Regional Teachers of the Year have embarked on together as a dedicated community of learners. Together, we will embrace challenges, celebrate success, and forge lasting bonds extending beyond the classroom. I've already made some of my new best friends, so that's pretty cool. I'm excited to continuing inspiring minds and positively impacting lives of those that I have the privilege of teaching. I'm sorry. And I just wanted to thank you all for your support and trusting my ability as an educator and inviting me to this table. And finally, let's have a great school year together. That's it.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Ms. Jackson? It's been a big day for her.
Just that can we please get James to go to U of M?
I don't think so because Mom and Dad both went. We met here, so they got it honestly.
She's got to take me.
Thank you. Verdic is still out for him, but I, I don't think he's going to go to U of M.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Dr. Pugh, Ms. Jackson. Any other questions or comments? Once, twice, thrice, thank you, Ms. Jackson. The next item on today's agenda is state and federal legislative update. Mr. Marty Ackley, Director of Pub, Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will lead the state and federal legislative update. State Board of Education Legislative Committee met on August 3, 2023. Dr. Pritchett will follow with a report on the State Board of Education Legislative Committee meeting. And then Dr. Robinson will follow with his NASB report. Ms. Ackley.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Ms. Jackson, go green.
Go white.
There you go. So the legislature's been on, on break for a month or so. And there are two dates in August that they're scheduled to come back. Those probably will just be profunctory and may not take attendance. They come back in earnest on September 5th. But the first part of the year has been very busy for them. The legislature has passed and Governor Whitmer has signed into law 23 pieces of education-related legislation, the session. So they've been quite busy. And as Dr. Rice mentioned earlier, back in October of last year, we sent a letter of priorities, legislative priorities, and he resented in January to the new legislature setting the priorities for the State Board of Education and the department that need to be addressed. To date, the legislature and governor have come through and enacted many of those recommendations. Many of those were noted in presentations earlier this, in the meeting. But just to give a quick recap, some of the issues that have been accomplished from that list of recommendations are the repeal of the state's A through F accountability system, repeal of the retention portion of the state's read-by-grade-three law, teacher and counselor reciprocity laws, expanding early childhood learning opportunities, universal school meals for all children, and the passage of common sense gun laws, increased funding for schools, transportation funding for schools, expansion of letters training for educators, tutoring, the My Family Engagement Centers and early literacy hubs, local school board member training, that's not mandatory, but it's voluntary and reimbursed, continuing to address the teacher shortage, which we just heard a presentation this afternoon, high-speed internet expansion, school infrastructure and capital needs. Those were all issues that were brought up in that, in that letter of priorities. Now, recommended legislative changes that are still being worked on from that letter that have not been passed yet include educator evaluations, support staff as substitute teachers, students in congregate foster care, allowing professionals in the MIPSers retirement system to stay in that system and work at MDE, registration of homeschooled children, more instructional time for students, retired teachers returning to teach part-time, expansion of career and tech education programs, charter school financial transparency, specifically education management organizations. So those are issues that were brought up in that letter that are still being worked on, yet to be accomplished. Several bills are in the process of being passed when the legislature comes back in the fall and September. There are four bills that were passed in their first house and are now in the second house. These are all House bills now in the Senate, one on cursive writing, one on excuse absences for students to play tabs at military funerals, one regarding retired teachers, and then another to allow for preregistration, voter preregistration for 16-year-olds in high school. Also, there's legislation being discussed and drafted that would require the completion of a FAFSA form as a requirement for a student to graduate. And that was discussed at the Legislative Committee meeting, and I will pass it to Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. As Marty's indicated, we had a very comprehensive meeting just by Marty reviewing all of the legislation that has been passed and signed by the governor. But we also had a discussion about a possible bill. My understanding is that bill has not been dropped yet, so it's in conversation yet regarding FAFSA and a requirement, or there's a discussion that the requirement would be that a student or family would have to complete their FAFSA application as a graduation requirement. And I know Ms. Lipton, who's got lots of experience with that because she worked with the Promising and Senator Bullock, had some information and some concerns about that. So I don't know if you want to share that at this point?
Well, I would, I will share, and I'm sure Brother Mitch was also.
Yes, and Dr. Robinson.
I would just like to make a suggestion. I guess that would be the, regarding the proposed legislation, we have an issue with the consequence being suggested by this proposal.
And the proposal is, just, just for those who are listening in?
That they would hold back graduation for students who do not fill out the FAFSA. I think that's the layman's way of saying it as quickly as. Graduation, making it a graduation requirement to fill out. And so we, we just believe the consequences of, of adding or having a consequence for something that is noneducational, non-binary to the school process in which you graduate and holding them accountable for. So we are, I would like to see if we can get the sponsor or potential sponsor of the bill to address the body or the question of what issue are we, are they attempting to truly solve with proposing this legislation? And once we have clarity on that, could we have a discussion on how it could be addressed otherwise through policy, incentive, you know, some other way to encourage the FAFSA being filled out by more students in the state of Michigan? I do understand that there are a lot of folks who aren't going to college. They may go into trades, they may go into the military. There are a lot of undocumented family members, families that just don't want to tell their business. And so by making this a requirement, I think it, the unintended consequences would have more ramifications than just us simply encouraging through other means, you know, without legislation being put into place.
So, so you are encouraging the encouragement of FAFSA as opposed to the requirement of?
Yes, and I would, we, I think that if we could have a conversation Zoom or otherwise, session will probably be on Wednesday. So to ask the Senator to come on a Wednesday, he'd probably have to see if he had that kind of time. But if we're here all day, he could probably make it in the afternoon. But if not, I'm trying to pick his schedules.
We are, we are pre-introduction of bill at this point.
Yeah, so this is just a conversation about what is it? Any bill you should be asking, what is it truly trying or attempting to solve? Or what is it trying to make better? And then what could the consequences arise from such a statute? And everything doesn't have to be solved through legislation, so.
Well said, thank you very much.
Question about that?
Please.
So there's, let me get this right. So FAFSA is a financial aid.
Yes, the financial aid.
You have to disclose like family income and stuff. So you can't graduate.
This is a proposed.
High school. No, I understand, but they're proposing you can't graduate high school unless you disclose how much your parents make.
First of all, there's no they yet because there's no bill yet.
Whoever is thinking about, okay.
There is an idea out there that a requirement for graduation.
It's to disclose your parents' income.
However you want.
That's crazy. My goodness.
I'm enjoying your enthusiasm about this.
Oh, my goodness.
Note, note to self, if you want to wake up Mr. McMillan. Mention FAFSA.
Or just something crazy like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, anything.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bullock, Mr. McMillan. Any other board members on FAFSA?
The other thing that we brought up is one of the obstacles, of course, with FAFSA, for all of us in the room that have filled out a FAFSA on behalf of someone else, is that it's very complicated and it's very challenging and it can be very frustrating. And so we talked about, if, if we are going to at least encourage more students to fill out FAFSA, I have no problem with that, I think that's great. We need to provide more capacity. We need to provide more help for students, their families, whatever, to do that because it's not just checking off a box or two. It's a rather complicated process. And as Marshall pointed out, this, I think, would be the only graduation requirement that's not academic in nature. I'm looking around the room. I, like, I don't, I don't know of any other kind of hoop to jump through that isn't about, you know, passing an exam or passing a course or taking the required number of credits, something that's academic and learning-oriented in nature. And then the third thing we talked about is FAFSA is really targeted towards those students who are planning to attend higher education, attend college. And I don't think, as a board, we've talked a lot about multiple pathways for students out of high school. We want all kids to graduate from high school, then we'd like them to pursue career in technical education. We'd like them to pursue a career in the military. We'd like them to get a job. There are lots of ways that you can have a full and meaningful life after high school that don't require filling out a FAFSA.
Thank you very much, Dr. Robinson, Ms. Snyder.
My turn to pile on. This is bizarre. Like, it's just bizarre. It really is. And like, if you, if you go to college, I mean, what we were talking about in June was what it looks like to provide the guidance for a student filling out a FAFSA when we were talking about what should we add to financial literacy? Is that that individual student would understand what they are signing up for, what they are going to pay off over time. Not that it would be, you know, dependent upon their parents' income or anything else that's under the FAFSA because there's a whole lot more in the FAFSA. It's not just the parents' income that is like quite above and beyond, that you wouldn't assume that it would be attached to what it looks like to get a loan to go to school, right? So what's probably most important in that process of the FAFSA is that the student understand what they're going to do through that debt that they are incurring. So it's, it's even more bizarre, right? Based on what we've been talking about anyhow.
See, if you hadn't included it in that, no.
No, seriously, I'd like, I think we need to have a discussion, just not that discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. We've got our fair bit of feedback on the encouragement of FAFSA, but not the requirement of FAFSA. And I do know that there are people that are reflecting upon the exemptions associated therewith. So I think that they're trying to find some sort of a middle ground that, that works here. You want to encourage those who need FAFSA to complete FAFSA, but you don't want to unintentionally adversely affect the opportunity to graduate by some who think that if you can't complete this because you don't have a parent to complete it or you can't understand it, or, or, or that somehow you're not supposed to be graduating from high school and moving on. Other questions or thoughts for Mr. Ackley or Dr. Pritchett as Chair of the Legislative Committee? We also have our Legislative Liaison, Dr. Cheryl Y. Kennedy in the, in the House. We appreciate her. Other questions or comments for Dr. Pritchett, Mr. Ackley, Dr. Kennedy? Once, twice, thrice, please.
I just want to thank MDE staff, legislative staff, Mr. Ackley, Cheryl, and Olivia for their work because for as busy as it has been, there has to be lots of background work done and questions answered and phones answered and emails responded to. And so we appreciate that coordination. We have made strides, no question about it. We appreciate the support of the legislature and the governor. And we still have things on the list, so.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. That is true. There's a lot of unpacking and a lot of advocacy. And it is not simply OPCA, although it is the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs. It's the entire department that engages in one way, shape, or form with, with legislation and trying to get better state statutes to improve education in the state. We know that, that it's not all about state statute, but that it's not all about state statute doesn't mean that it isn't at all about state statute. On, on a number of issues, it is about state statute. We have to work on that. Dr. Robinson, to you. NASB presentation.
No report.
There you go. It's the right length. Very good. Thank you so much for your, for your presentation. May I please have a motion to adopt Dr. Pritchett's initial resolution? So Dr. Pritchett moves it and Senator Bullock seconds to discussion. And if you would be kind enough to read it into the record.
All right, I will do that. Just a little bit of preamble. And again, I appreciate Marty's assistance with this. This resolution was originally written in the year 2003, passed by the Board of Education, distributed to school districts across the state. It was redistributed the same resolution in 2006 and again in 2013. This particular resolution that I'm going to read here in a minute has had some minor changes made to it by the department. And we also have received input from the Michigan Tribal Council. And they have received input from the tribes within the state of Michigan. So just keep that in context as I read through it. Resolution on the Use of Native American Mascots, Nicknames, and Logos and Promote a Better Understanding of Native American Peoples and Culture. Whereas people of all cultures, races, and religions have a right to be treated with dignity and respect. And whereas Michigan State Board of Education believes it is important that all students learn about the cultural aspects of various communities so that they will understand cultural norms, develop tolerance, respect differences, become good citizens and productive adults, and foster mutually beneficial and trusting relationships with their neighboring communities. And whereas some Native American tribes, organizations, state and local officials, and private citizens find the use of Native American mascots, nicknames, logos, and symbols within our public schools to be offensive and further find through empirical and research-based evidence that their use has a detrimental effect on the educational achievement of Native American students. And whereas the Michigan Civil Rights Commission, by resolution dated May 20, 2002, quote, encourages all school districts to ensure that instructional materials, coursework, policies, and procedures are respectful of cultural differences and enhance cultural competency and our void of stereotypical language and representations, unquote. And whereas Michigan State Board of Education has adopted policies for creating effective learning environments, policies on bullying and policies on safe schools, and encourages local districts to work to promote positive learning atmospheres that foster learning for all Michigan children. And whereas educators have a responsibility to model behavior that celebrates and respects the diverse traditions and beliefs of all citizens. And whereas the State Board of Education recognizes that this matter should be addressed at the local level of each separate school district. Whereas the Michigan Native American Heritage Fund, known as NAHF, was created to promote understanding, history, and good relationships between the state and its citizens of Native American heritage and distribute funds in the form of grants to schools, colleges, and universities and local governments to assist with initiatives to improve curricula and resources related to Native American issues and mascot or imagery revisions, ideally in collaboration with Michigan's federally recognized Indian tribes. And whereas the NAHF funds may also be used to replace or revise mascots and imagery that may be deemed offensive to Native Americans or may convey inaccurate representations of Native American culture and values. And whereas 11 public school districts in Michigan have. 11 public school districts in Michigan have chosen to change their school mascots and have received grants from the NAHF to help offset the costs of changing their mascots, imagery, and logos from those depicting offensive Native American stereotypes. And 7 public school districts have received NAHF grants to develop curricula and programming directed to the better understanding of Native American peoples and culture. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the State Board of Education promotes curricula that is fair, appropriate, and accurate in depicting the cultures and histories of all people, and be it further resolved that the State Board of Education recommends that educators teach all children to be aware of and respectful of various cultures present in society. And be it further resolved that the State Board of Education supports and strongly recommends the elimination of Native American mascots, nicknames, logos, fight songs, insignias, antics, and team descriptors by all Michigan schools. And be it finally resolved that the State Board of Education appreciates the efforts and initiatives of the federally recognized Native American tribes in Michigan and the Michigan Native American Heritage Fund for supporting local school districts in the recognition, respect, and deeper understanding of Native American peoples and cultures.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. You may now have a drink of water.
Thank you very much.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Dr. Pritchett, would you like to add anything to that reading?
First of all, we appreciate the input we received from the Michigan Tribal Council. I think that it is, in its creation of a fund to assist school districts when they make a decision to, you know, help them with expenses and changing mascots, et cetera, is helpful. I think it is appropriate that the board, at this point, again, reiterate the resolution regarding the use of Native American mascots and nicknames in public schools, and encourage our local school districts who are affected to begin those discussions if they're not already in those discussions.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. We also appreciate the work of our Indigenous Education Initiative staff in the department as well. Other board members' reflections. Dr. Pugh.
And that was just my only question, is making sure that we were using language that was reflective of the culture and what they prefer to be called. And if we, but it seems like we've sent this through.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Is it, so it's my understanding that there are some schools that have deliberated with local tribes, and they agree on use of any of those things. Is that, are there any schools in the state of Michigan that have done that?
I can't, basically, getting tribal input that it is acceptable to continue
Yes.
with a, I'm not aware of that. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I'm just not aware of it.
I've heard of school districts in the state of Michigan that have done that. And so I'm just curious if, you know, because I'm supportive of the resolution, but for there to be just, like, for us to say, period, this is what we think versus encourage local districts to be in contact with local tribes. I don't know. I'm just curious about that because I thought there were districts in the state of Michigan.
Okay. There are, only, you know, the number has dwindled because increasingly this is perceived to be unacceptable. Please.
So, better way to say it, nationally, those conversations have been had.
Okay.
I'll just use the NCA, for example. There are only three schools in America that got to keep their Native American name, but their logo had to change because it was derogatory.
Okay.
And here in Michigan, it would be the Central Michigan Chippewas. But they had to change the spearhead or whatever. So now it's just an action C on their head. So there are conversations about, in some places in the country, that are, that tribe is that much influenced that they want to keep their name, the Seminoles in Florida, but they had to change the moniker.
Okay.
Or the logo because they were demeaning in nature a fighting Irishman or, you know, a red-skinned head or all those types of things.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other reflections? Other reflections? Please.
I mean, I guess just, so this says, though, that the State Board supports and strongly recommends the elimination of these, you know, mascots, nicknames, logos. But is it, I guess, so the question is that, you know, I continue the question of Mrs. Snyder. I mean, is it possible, not only acceptable, but could it be that they appreciate? Is there some way that a school district and the local tribe could say, yeah, this is something that you're doing that we would support, not just tolerate? Is that, if that's possible, we're saying we're gonna, we're gonna, we want that eliminated also? Is that, as I read the further result?
I don't think anything under 13 precludes what you're saying under a subtextual or an implicit 13. I don't think anything precludes the converse, in this text, precludes the conversation that you're talking about having. The conversation, really, which was fleshed out at the higher ed level by Mr. Bullock.
Right.
That there are those conversations that take place periodically at the post-secondary level. At the secondary level, there's been some digging in in local communities. And ultimately, I think, in a number of those local communities, an acceptance that what might not be, what might feel okay from somebody who's not a part of a discriminated against group is not okay by the discriminated against group, feels very different. And that you can inadvertently wound in your language. And so you've seen, you've seen communities, not simply in left-leaning jurisdictions, but also in rural jurisdictions that have decided that this is not what they ought to be doing in 2023.
No, no, I agree. I just didn't know if there's, is it, I don't care. That's fine. I mean, I don't think anybody has a right to have a name that, you know, offends a large portion of a certain population. I don't, so I think this is, I'm supportive of this. I just want to make sure that there's room if the local tribe says, yeah, you're honoring our heritage and we appreciate it, that we're not saying we oppose that.
We would not get in the way of that conversation. No. Ms. Tilly?
I just wanted to say, this goes back to DEI and why it's so important so that we can be educated about other communities and have cultural competence in our state and in our educational system. So we know how what we're doing affects one another and that we can come together so that we're not offending one another. And we can be a stronger community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder.
I'll just, I mean, I don't confuse this with DEI, which has been to a very different initiative and had many other different things attached to it. It's just a very reasonable policy that I think most of us can come together on. And again, just as long as we know that local communities can partner with and deliberate and get blessing from a tribe if they so choose, like Marshall suggested, that we'll, I think we're all on the same page. And thank you for presenting it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none from board members, if we could.
I think we need to have, at some point, someone come in and teach us about DEI so everybody has a clear understanding because everybody doesn't. Thank you.
That teaching is ongoing. So I appreciate that. We will continue the teaching. Yes, ma'am. Any, anything else on the, on the motion on the table? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote. Ms. Evans.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Board, we have one other motion to consider. Could I have a motion, please?
I move to request an opinion from the Michigan Attorney General.
Can I second that?
Okay. So we have a motion from Dr. Pugh, a second from Ms. Snyder. Discussion, Dr. Pugh, to you. If you would, please, read it into the record.
On July 11, 2023, Governor Whitmer signed Executive Order 2023-6 outlining an executive reorganization and creating the new Michigan Department of Lifelong Education Advancement and Potential My Lee. One of the stated purposes of this executive order is to build an education system from preschool through post-secondary that can support our kids, families, and the economy of the future by ensuring anyone can make it in Michigan. Page 1, paragraph 4 of the order. Further, the EO states that My Lee will establish and implement a statewide vision for lifelong education from preschool to post-secondary. Its responsibilities include expanding equitable access to quality, affordable programs and services, and improving outcomes for all Michiganders in early learning and care and higher education. References are page 2, section 1A. Article 8, section 3 of the 1963 Michigan Constitution states in part that leadership and general supervision over all public education includes adult education and instructional programs in state institutions, except as to institutions of higher education granting baccalaureate degrees is vested in the State Board of Education. It shall serve as a general planning and coordinating body for all public education, including higher education, and shall advise the legislature as to the financial requirements in connection therewith. As such, there appear now to be potentially two departments with overlapping authority over all public education, particularly preschool public education. Therefore, the State Board of Education directs the Superintendent of Public Instruction to request an opinion from the Michigan Attorney General to provide constitutional clarity regarding Executive Order 2023-6.
Okay, so we have a motion. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. I have a motion. We have a second. We've read the motion into the record. Any additional discussion thereof?
No, you know, I just, I think that, you know, while the intent of the governor's executive order for creating this department is to enhance educational opportunity, it just raises some constitutional questions. And we know that the framers of our constitution intentionally separated public education outside of the governor's office. And this is not at all, anything that's, I mean, we appreciate the work that we've been able to do with the governor as well as the legislature. We just want to make sure. And that is what this request and view represents, is that we just want to make sure that this is within the constitution. And again, making sure that we're not stepping outside of what the framers of the constitution's intent is, or was.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Other, other board members' reflections? Ms. Snyder.
I'd just say I definitely have concerns, major concerns, and reservations about the constitutionality of the governor's executive order. I'm not sure that the AG opinion will accurately satisfy those concerns, but it's definitely a step forward. And when I think about the people that I've talked to that understood the intention of the constitution and the way that we elect our State Board of Education is to provide consistency across the continuum of education. So creating an additional bureaucratic body that would be a part of that, it only brings chaos and confusion from my perspective. But from a foundational standpoint, I, the constitutionality needs to be addressed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Other board members? Ms. Lipton? No? Okay. Mr. McMillan?
I know a little bit about AG opinions. I know that legislators can request them and I believe the AG must act on it at some point. I'm hope, do we know if we can? I mean, I guess anybody can request an opinion. Do you know if it, well, I guess we'll find out if it has any bearing or authority. Like I said, I think there's a must if a legislator, and it might be good to have a legislator also ask for this. I'm not sure if that would be helpful or not. And then a little bit to Mrs. Snyder's comment that, you know, this says to provide constitutional clarity. As I understand it, an AG opinion does carry legal weight unless it goes to court. I mean, if it's not adjudicated, or if it's not adjudicated, then it kind of stands. So I, but I also believe that, you know, potentially a court may need to decide this as well. But it would be helpful if the AG says the right thing and agrees that it's unconstitutional. But I, I, yeah, I guess I'll just leave it at that. I appreciate the majority of the board from the other side of the aisle moving this. And it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Other board members? Other board members? Hearing and seeing none? We could have a roll call vote. Ms. Evans?
Yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Evans, board members, we are at comments by State Board of Education members. Are there any board members who would like to offer additional comments at this time? Mr. McMillan?
I guess I would just like to add on to what Ms. Pugh had mentioned about the restraint and seclusion. I know that there's been some, you know, I remember Lieutenant Governor Calley pushed, helped push through laws regarding it, and a lot of concern about restraint and seclusion. And, you know, to remember that parents aren't allowed to see what exactly is going on in the classroom and how this unfolds. I mean, to some degree, maybe some of it's appropriate, maybe some of it's completely inappropriate. We just, it's unfortunate that we're not even allowed to know that. And I mean, in order to be allowed, I guess you'd have to, you know, cameras in the classroom, which could bring in privacy issues potentially. Maybe it can be done correctly, or maybe there are certain times when they're gonna, when they're gonna exercise this restraint and seclusion, that a lapel camera has to be put on just for the parents' sake or something. Or I don't know what can be done. But I think that what we heard from the parent is certainly concerning. And I know that this is an issue that is not just one side of the aisle or the other. I think it's very bipartisan concerns. And so I do hope that, I guess, like I said, I thought that things were put in place by, back when I was in the legislature over restraint and seclusion, to deal with a lot of the concerns. But apparently, there's quite a bit more still out there. And I would say, not in this particular instance that we heard of, but I also, as I mentioned before, there may be instances where if we didn't have to worry about the police coming to the parents, you know, for disobeying truancy laws, that maybe some of these, some kids might benefit from being withheld from school a while and dealt with some of these issues, maybe, you know, getting some education but also focusing on other areas. And again, I'm not talking about this in particular, but I do think that it might help everybody, the kids that remain and the kids that could use that additional help and focus without having to worry about truancy laws. So I do think that that would be something to look at as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. Other board members? Ms. Snyder?
I would just echo that. If you read the story here and look into it, she says, per the policy for emergency use of seclusion and restraint approved by this body, March 2017, there is a whole packet needing to be completed that has never been done in my student's case. So clearly, there's an issue of compliance with the law that's been written for a purpose that I would argue sounds like is exactly why we wouldn't want something like this to happen. And if you're, if you're dealing with situations like this in school and someone walks away with broken bones, a student walks away with broken bones, that's a problem. That should never happen. But I would, I would like it if we could follow up with the last caller and just understand more what was going on in that case. She referred to an entire school district, not just her own personal problems. And it was just really something I think we should just make sure. So if we could do that, that would be great.
We can do that. We are not the R. We are not the arbiter of legal action against individual local school district employees. And there are 841 districts across the state. There are 3,400 schools, a couple hundred school district employees, a couple hundred thousand school district employees. And we don't know what the other side of that story is.
Sure.
That's a matter for local law enforcement to address.
But when someone refers to corruption in a local school district, I do think we need to investigate that and consider what that looks like.
Investigate corruption is, again, the province of local law enforcement. I don't think we have a capacity or the legal responsibility to address corruption. It's not to say that it shouldn't be addressed. It's that it is not our
Right.
legal responsibility to try to uncover or to discern corruption in a local school district.
But when an ex-teacher calls in and says there's corruption in this local school district, clearly, the Department of Education is a part of that conversation, even though we don't enforce the legal ramifications of the compliance that hasn't been kept.
If it is financial, we report it to their auditors.
Right.
We share in detail what has been alleged.
Sure.
We can certainly do that with local law enforcement relative to what she's alleging. It's hard to believe that, having shared at a state board meeting in public, that she hasn't shared elsewhere as well, including with local law enforcement. We're happy to share it with local law enforcement.
Sure.
She also said local law enforcement was in cahoots.
Yeah.
So that's way beyond our scope.
Yeah. It's still important for us to know about the issues that are going on.
I agree with you, yes.
Have we, I have not seen anything in writing. Have we received anything in writing that we could send over to?
Did she even leave a number?
To Dr. VD.
To the best of my knowledge, we've not received anything in writing from the woman who she's called. But if she did share something in writing, we would be happy to turn that over to law enforcement.
Right.
Without a doubt.
Yes. Yeah. I would think we would, yeah.
Other, Dr. Pritchett.
This has already been mentioned, but by the time we return next month, school will be in session. Hopefully, all children will be back in school, that we will have a normal year, whatever that is for anyone's classroom or school. But to all of those teachers who are out there, our Teacher of the Year shared with me this morning, our previous Teacher of the Year shared with me this morning, that when she gets back to U.P. tomorrow, the next day, she and her husband are going in to do some painting in her classroom. And that's just one example of what teachers and administrators are doing right now in order to prepare for children to come and start anew. When I was an administrator, I used to say to some of my students who would frequent my office more than others, that the file that I had in my drawer disappeared over the summer, and we started anew. And so I wish for all students that they start anew and have a great year.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Anyone else for the good of the group? Going once, twice, thrice. Hearing none. Future meetings are Tuesday, September 12th, Tuesday, October 10th, Tuesday, November 14th. All regular meetings, all at 9:30. If there are any topics board members would like considered for future meeting agendas, please notify Ms. Evans or me. Please note that